We'd call this regular meeting of Kingsville City Commission to Order is Monday, January, uh, January. You like January? June 14, 2013. It's six o'clock. Four, Commission members are present. Commissioner Garcia is here. We did have a forum. We generally open our meetings with a prayer and pledges of allegiance. If you care to join us, please stand. Mark, will you do some prayer?
I would like to thank you for your service to us. We ask that you would lead God and write this in our name today. In the name of Jesus, would you please lay your hand over our soldiers in the field and protect them in Jesus' name and pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of Texas, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and individual.
We have minutes from our official meeting of regular meeting. So move, man. Motion made by Commissioner Beckles to approve both of the minutes, seconded by Commissioner Luber. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Peet.
Yes. Now, we got no public care until we'll go right into reports from commission and staff. Anything?
Mr. Bob, thank you very much. One is I was contacted by Dick Messparler today. He was informing me that the county had approved the PDA agreement with Zarsky Development Company and the interlocal agreement with the city of Kingsville for a lot of the trails development. So it's like we're moving ahead on that project and we've got a lot of work to do. But that's, uh, we're through all the administrative work and all that. And then lastly, you have some additional materials in front of you for Agenda Item 12. I make sure you have that.
Okay.
That's it.
Courtney?
Yes, sir. Just a reminder that our next regular meeting is in two weeks on July the 2nd. The deadline for Agenda Items was moved up just a little bit. The city managers and I emailed the staff to noon this Thursday. And just a reminder, I'll be out on Monday and Tuesday of next week.
Anybody have anything for the commission? You got a special guest you want to introduce to the staff and commission?
Good evening, Mayor, commissioners. My name is Glenn Jones. I'm the Community Plans Liaison Officer, Commissioned Assistant at NAS Kingsville. And it's my honor to introduce the 34th Commanding Officer of Naval Air Station Kingsville, Captain Christopher Chet Weisner.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners. Just thanks for this opportunity just to come by and just say a quick hello, not just to commissioners but also to folks who have done all the hard work out here. Well, if you guys had a chance to meet my family and what were the last few months since we've been here, and I know a lot of you guys are with the change of command, so I think a lot of folks have kind of an idea of where I want to take the air station in the future. So, you know, Sharon and I, we've made a determination to be a part of this community. You live in Bishop, just over the, uh, just over the border outside of Kingsville. So you're really going to see my wife and I being really an active part of this community. It's very important. We consider this our highest honor of our 23 years in uniform. It's a passion, almost a calling to command this air station. So we chose Texas, we chose Kingsville, and we're really excited to command this air station. So these are challenging times. I'm not going to lie to you, if you've been watching the news, reading the paper, you know these are pretty tough times. Budgets are getting tighter, manpower, all kinds of, those kind of issues would be tough for us. But I'm going to work really hard for this air station to build it up and make it work. It's not just infrastructure, work on people programs, work on warfighting. I consider this air station a weapons platform. And right now, our nation continues to be at war. We have men and women overseas tonight fighting the good fight in Afghanistan. And as you know, we train half of the tactical aviators that fly off in aircraft care of the Navy and Marine Corps in the United States, frankly, the best in the world. So we're going to continue to have to be focused, we're going to continue to do the things that back team, work hard for the city of Kingsville, be down there to Austin with Dick and the mayor, and fight the good fight, whichever way we need to fight. And I will be definitely committed to do that. And I'm also committed, like I said with Chairman, to really be a part of the community and help out where that, uh, where that's required. Like you had me said the other night, if you were there Friday, we're going to work hard to get new buildings and new airplanes and new technology, but it's not about stuff, it's about people. And the people of the city of Kingsville, the people that work for me, the warfighters that are going to work in this space, eventually go away to fight the good fight downrange. And, um, and we're committed to this effort. So I thank you for this time today. If you have any questions, I'll, uh, carry on, I gotta head out to another meeting tonight, so I appreciate your time.
Well, Chet, I was at your change of command or part of the change of command and I, uh, I really came away from it with the sense that I know you're not originally from Texas, but you got here as soon as you could.
That's right. There's no question that this fucking taking over 30 seconds. I have three dogs and two cats. They're named General Grant, General Lee, and General Jackson. And our cats are Remington and Winchester, so. They're all three dogs that my family can get. So we're here, we're really excited about being here, working hard for you guys, working hard for the nation.
Thank you so much.
All right. Appreciate you being here. Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Uh, well, is that, we're gonna do that now or you want to do that during the, uh?
We can do it during the public comment.
Is it gonna take some? Okay. Are we gonna, is there gonna be a conversation?
Could be.
Come on up, young man. Tell us what you're up to.
My name is Sugar Cox.
Okay.
My name is Sugar Cox, and the reason why I'm here tonight is because, well, when I was like nine or 10, I went to the fire department down by APB. And, you know, which one I'm talking about. And, um, and they, I found out, I, cause I was getting a tour of the fire trucks, and I told the guy who was giving me a tour, and I wanted to be a firefighter when I grow up. And I was only, I was like nine or 10.
When you were a young guy.
Yeah. I'm 13 now. And he told me, he told me that they did this thing called the Junior Firefighter's Explorers Program. So, and he told me you had to be 14 to do that. So I've been waiting for, till I turned 14, and I'm about to turn 14 this summer, actually the next month. And I went down there a few weeks ago to see what I had to do to, like, get registered into it, and it turns out that they no longer had it. And so I was, I came down here to talk to guys about trying to get it reinstated. Because, one, it would be a good thing to have, because if you bring it back, it'll be good. Because, well, for all the kids who want to be a firefighter when they get older, it gives them a chance to have real-world experience as a firefighter. And it gives them a head start to get toward where they want to be. And, like, and so I guess, I guess, um...
You just want us to start the program back, that's what?
Yeah.
And you're, uh, now what grade do you be in this next year?
I'll be in the seventh grade.
Seventh grade, and where do you, where do you, do you live here in Kingsville?
Yes, sir.
What's your, what's your address for Mary, she probably needs that?
Uh, 215 South Forest Street.
Mr. Cox, when are you gonna turn 14? What's the date?
Um, 27th of July.
27th? Okay. Do you have other friends and people you know that would like to do this also?
I have a few friends that want to be a fire, that would like to be a firefighter.
Girls and boys?
I have, I have a few, I have a boy, some guys.
Very interesting.
Uh, something the city manager, I mean, could help you with.
Sure. And we got a fire chief too, I'll talk to him about that.
Okay. There you go. That's a good program.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for being here. Need a fireman? Okay, well, my good friend Alvar C, who's not here, has a proclamation, and is there anyone here from the Pauline Gonzalez Munoz family? Okay. Yeah, I didn't think there was going to be, so I'm just gonna read it from here. This is a proclamation, chief, well, this, uh, Ms. Munoz turned 100 years old this year, and so, uh, and she was originally from, not originally from Kingsville, lived in Kingsville for many years, but I'm, so I'm gonna read this proclamation, whereas Pauline Paula Gonzalez Munoz was born in, in Santo Niño Ranch located in San Diego, Texas, the Dugall County, to Nativida Narango Munoz and Pomocita Gonzalez on June the 7th, 1913. So she turned 100 this last week. Whereas 100 years ago, childbirth at home was common, recording births were not officially recorded until it was recorded at county seat. That Gonzalez family moved to Kingsville in the 1920s and bought a house in the Mexican Colonia at 401 East Chaparral Street, known as East Avenue C. Whereas Paul attended up to the third grade, as was a common practice in the early 1900s, where she stayed home to help with extended large families, with an extended large family of eight girls and one boy. Boy, don't you know he had it hard. Whereas Paul Munoz married Severino Salinas and had two boys, Jesse and Ernesto, and one girl, Pauline. They were divorced in 1940, and Paula worked hard as a single mother to raise her small family here in Kingsville where she, where she was cooking, her cooking skills led to positions at Clever, Clever County Hospital and St. Martin's Parochial School. As her small family began to leave the nest at 401 East Avenue C, Paula moved and worked in San Antonio, had worked in San Antonio since 1953 as an elevator operator for 10 years at the Baptist Hospital. Then she, uh, because that job became obsolete, she was transferred to the supply department. And then she eventually went to work for the Hilton Hotels on the Riverwalk where she, she retired at the age of 68. And she continued her volunteer work at the Catholic Charities. She has great love and affection for helping others in her family. She strives to improve the future of others through education and good work ethic. And whereas Paula has been a loving mother and grandmother to her children, grandchildren, and great aunt to many nieces, nephews, she will forever remain very proud of her family. Now therefore, I, Alvar C, am mayor pro tem of the city of Kingsville, do your mark of celebrating and proclaim, this day is Pauline Gonzalez Munoz Day, and urge all of those who are gathered here today to join me in celebration of Pauline's 100th birthday and her milestone achievements of 10 decades. And it's signed by Commissioners Garcia and attested by our city secretary. And our seal has been affixed to this proclamation, and it's quite a, quite an accomplishment. Here's a, so, happy birthday. Does anybody know she's, I guess she's not here in Kingsville, and, no, all right. Anybody else have anything? If not, then we'll go to public comments on, on the agenda. This is an opportunity for anybody that wants to talk about anything, you want to talk about, own their own opinion, or you just go to the body, tell us who you are and where you live, and you have three minutes to talk about that in particular.
Good evening, commissioners, staff, and mayor. John Evers, I live at 610 South 18th Street. Dick, I'm Kansas in 2010. I'm a student here at Texas A&amp;M Kingsville. Somebody may remember me from last year's bigger event. I've been a big part of, like, volunteers in the class and so forth. The agenda I'm going to talk about today in particular is with the canopy that we're setting up here on, by the zero escape. And just in general, before I get into that, I just want to talk in history with Kingsville, my experience with Kingsville. And the one thing that they've always asked me in our interaction with you guys is what can we do to help to the college and so forth, make this town better? Well, one of the mistakes that the college made with me was they sent me on an expensive day trip to College Station. So unfortunately, well, my, my previous college experience was in Harlingen, just to see, so I jumped from there to, to Kingsville. I was amazed when everything was so awesome. I go to College Station and I saw how streamlined everything was, especially when it turns over to sideburns and so forth. And then to come back here, it's almost, it's almost like being stuck in the 1980s. And as you go around Kingsville, you just can't help but feel like you're just suffocated in the 1980s. And so, you know, now I'm going to be a junior, and in my mind, all I can think about is let's just get done with classes and let's get out of here. And I'm afraid that's what, what happened with a lot of college students. There's no attachment to the city, there's no, uh, first thing with myself, I picked up more litter in the streets than anyone. And one thing I wanted to bring up was, y'all should try to address that, uh, because when we do a lot of volunteer service for you guys, there is, it's, you know, like, if we come for the bigger thing, of the kind of projects we got, and guaranteed, half only litter pick-ups. Okay, in my mind, I'm thinking, don't we have delinquents and so forth, we can take advantage of. Meanwhile, we could use, in the past, I got mistimed, I was sure of late to these meetings, so I would see things like, uh, we're gonna paint outside of one of the buildings or so forth, and you're hiring contractors. So I'm just, uh, appeal to you guys to keep in mind that you do have colleges, you do have a lot of volunteer opportunities, and they're just not always there happy to become trash, but they're happy to do plenty of other things for you guys and for the city. So perhaps trying to find avenues to involve them and help increase our pride and our effectiveness. And in respect of the pride, and giving the young kid, the students, a pill for the, the fire program, that gives them something to do, keeps them from crying, and helps our future, which is really what we should be focusing on. Which brings me back to the canopy. But the canopy here that we're putting in, uh, this has been in the works for a while. We've known they should be, because we wanted to get rid of it. I've known about this for a long time. So I happened to run across the proposal online, and I saw a $2,500 estimate for conduit and running electricity into this thing. And apparently we're just, we're gonna activate all the outlets that the previous had, so I don't know what to say.
Anybody have any objections? Just give me more time? No? Okay. Go ahead.
I'm just a little disappointed not to see a kind of proposal for something such as solar panels or wind turbine, you know? Something as simple as this, the whole purpose of the canopy is to develop activity place. This could be appealing to college students as well as the community. The zero escape nearby is something that we've actively helped maintain, uh, it's a beautiful part of the city. And even in the plan that mentions, we want to match the concrete atmosphere with the grid layout. So how about we try to match it also as well with environmental purpose, at least to consider it. I'm not saying to at least look at the options, but how much it would cost, because if you put in this $2,500 conduit, you're gonna locate, you're paying electricity, the city's gonna pay electricity for the thousand years or however long you have to stay. If you take the extra time to consider the long-term objective of this, not only would it be more appealing to the younger generations, but it would cost you less in the long run. Something would be timely.
Thank you. Okay, then we'll go into our consent agenda. A couple items. Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Luber to accept the consent agenda as presented, seconded by Commissioner Beckles. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Pena?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Mayor Peet.
Yes. We'll go to our regular agenda. First item is consider resolution establishing a Kingsville Main Street downtown plan for the city of Kingsville, Texas. Bob?
Mayor, commissioners, we, uh, we discussed and went over this plan in our workshop a couple of weeks ago, and, um, it's just only an agenda tonight for consideration for adopting as a, as a formal plan, like a lot of plans, it, it drill purposes to give kind of some of the background and some of the principles and some of the concepts that we're pursuing in doing downtown redevelopment. It, uh, it doesn't have a level of detail, and, I mean, there's, when you do downtown redevelopment, you're doing hundreds of things. And, um, what we tried to do in this plan is to kind of lay them out in a framework of things that we have to do in governance, meaning what the city can do to facilitate downtown redevelopment, um, what can be done in urban design, and what can be done in management of a retail district. So it's a, it's, uh, it's not a complete blueprint, but it's meant to be kind of a framework for, for action. It's a work in progress, it'll never be complete, because, uh, it's probably, uh, it's probably been things added even since we discussed it a couple of weeks ago, but it's meant to provide a framework to show that there is a plan for downtown, um, and it, and it's multifaceted, and, um, and it's based on certain principles and, uh, and actions that the commission is taking in the days.
Any questions?
Uh, yeah, I have a question, too. On this plan, which is, it's very well put together, and it's got a lot of great ideas and such, um, if we authorize and establish this downtown plan, and I'm looking at the resolution, does that mean that we are definitely wanting to do every item in here? This is still, it's not in concrete, it's not static, it's still gonna be, we can take or delete things as?
No, like I say, it's, it's, it becomes, the one you have in front of you is probably obsolete, just since it was printed. In other words, it's a work in progress, it's meant to show the, more of the connection back to principles and the previous actions, and to kind of provide a framework.
Right, I, yeah, I understand, but I'm just, if we accept this, I just want to be on record that there's things in here that I think are wonderful, but there's other things in here I don't think we're ready for or may not want to do at all. And I'm, I think the plan on whole is, is pretty darn good, but I don't want to be, I don't want to be saying, yes, well, I want to accept this plan as, just as being individually, and then come back and say, well, you accepted the plan, and this...
Yeah, I, I would characterize it as a plan or a guide, and anything in here of any substance would have to be brought back to the commission for approval.
Funding purposes.
Yeah, for funding at the very least, and for conceptually as well, but...
I just wanted to make sure that that was...
Yeah, no, you asked a good question.
Okay.
It's a guide, and it'll be, as Bob said, it'll change day to day. We could be presented with an opportunity that we are not even aware of today, that we would want to take it to energize. So we'll have to remain flexible, and, uh, each, as I said, each of these items will have to come before the city commission for funding approval.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have a question?
Bob, this, this is part of the, of the city master plan, is that correct?
Well, it's based on the city master plan, and the master plan calls for downtown, but didn't go into the, the tail in itself, and so this is meant to supplement and sort of flesh out some of the concepts that were, were in the master plan from 2008. And, uh, matter of fact, in the beginning of this plan, it refers to, I think, three or four bullets that were in the master plan, and it tends to flesh them, flesh them out.
Put a lot of work into it. And created that, put finally the gun into the needy, greedy, and, uh, while they're going to store acid for money, it's so.
That's good, huh?
And Paula will move in the caboose.
There's one more. I think this, again, is a good plan and all that, and I know one of the things that we talked about in workshops, I didn't see any timelines. I think it'd really be helpful if we start, if we have plans and if we have things that are brought to the commission, we have timelines on these things. Whether we achieve them or not, at least we have some timelines on the things that we think we can achieve within a reasonable amount of time.
Absolutely. "Time bound and measurable" were the words that I heard from anybody who talks about these things, or how they have to be time bound and measurable, because, uh, otherwise we don't know, we're still floundering, and we need to know, we need to know what our expectations are. So I would agree with you, we need to come back and, and fine tune this with, okay, what can we do, when can we do it, and how much is it going to cost?
That's a big...
Yeah, yeah, it all comes down to money.
Any other questions?
Make a motion that we accept the resolution, establish a Kingsville downtown plan for the city of Kingsville.
I'll second.
Good motion, Mayor, Commissioner Beckles, to accept this resolution, seconded by Commissioner Luber. Any other discussion? There's a lot of stuff in here, Bob, and I think that, uh, that Commissioner Luber makes a very good point. This all needs to be, you know, we need to, we need to know where we're going and when we're doing it, too. I know a lot of us have the funding, but, uh, that's our job, to make sure that happens. Any other, any other questions or comments? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Pena?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Peet?
Yes. Next item is consider resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an interlocal agreement, cooperative purchasing of goods, products, and services between the city of Kingsville and the city of Bedford.
Mayor, commissioners, good evening. This is a relatively simple interlocal agreement that we have done with the city of Fort Worth in the past for purposes. It follows along with all, you know, with the Bible Word, it's GA thing. It's authorized under chapter 271 of Local Government Code, the InterLocal Government Cooperation Act. Basically, the intent is, uh, came down, he's looking at buying some Nomex, some lighter weight, uh, product here, and it's available through a purchasing co-op that's operated to the city of Bedford. There's a lot of cities in North Central Texas, but also Central and West, because I know it's Snyder's on the west as well. And, um, so there's no financial impact of this agreement, but rather just authorization to enter into the interlocal agreement, so we can explore additional options for the purchase of materials.
Any questions?
But this, this will allow us to be part of the co-op?
Yes, sir.
And it's operated by the city of Bedford, and there were, well, it looks like about 50 or so cities that are involved in there, so.
I have two things.
Yes, ma'am.
One is, uh, good work, both of you guys, Chief Reed, David, and if this young man gets his way, we may have to look at some small sizes, huh? Just knowing that out there may not happen.
Any other questions? Talk to some motion, or calls for it.
It's unbelievable.
Thank you. A motion made by Commissioner Luber to accept this resolution as presented, seconded by Commissioner Beckles. Is there any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Pena?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Mayor Peet?
Yes. Next item is consider authorizing staff move forward with improvements of Phase 1 of the Downtown Pavilion Improvement Project.
Uh, the tourism staff started developing estimates in quotes for some work at the pavilion. This would have been what we call the Phase 1, because it will be an ongoing project. But we have estimates in quotes on the work, including the water blasting or pressure washing of the entire structure, some touch-up paint, uh, doing the electrical as well, uh, and some basic quotes on the concrete. And so, uh, we're, we're working still, we're getting some better concrete pricing, if we can come up with it, we did have two firm quotes on that. Uh, so the basic estimate on this was $47,958.75. We also had a couple of subcontractors in the original move that weren't paid by the original contractor who left it alone over there for so long. Uh, that's another $21,05, $2,105. That brings that sub total of $50,063.75. And I usually like to put a 10% contingency on that, that would add another $5,006.38, leading the total project to be estimated at $55,070.13. And I think Mark's right behind me with a, with a budget.
Any questions on that?
Uh, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the things is, I know we're gonna have to put the electrical service in and all that stuff, and, you know, this is, this is subject to change, but I really like the young man's idea of pursuing, possibly solar panels, and, and we look at that?
Certainly, we can look at anything, ma'am.
I, I think that's a really, it's time for us to start... I think that's a really, it's time for us to start going that direction. And I think that's a very, very good place to start. So I'd, I personally want to see something like that. We need to start doing stuff like, we need to start doing that kind of thing.
Well, we do have lots of sunshine here, yes, ma'am.
It's better places, solar panels.
There's no question about that.
It's okay, it's okay.
We can look at it, it's fine.
Yeah.
And we can come back and look and try and get some prices, some estimates on it. Of course, you know, solar panels have come down in price lately.
A lot, and size.
And size. And I've seen several parking garages or pavilions shade areas for automobiles that now use solar panels on top. Nature centers primarily, state parks are going to as well.
And your return on the investment is quicker, which is very, very helpful.
Right. You only have enough sun days and given it's not going to be used 24 hours a day, and it's going to generate electricity during the time when it's not being used, it basically runs a meter back.
Right.
Yes. I notice we're appropriating the money, but we really haven't seen any design or...
We think we've got a pretty good cost estimate. We want to get that before the commission now. Could be the costs come in less. Of course, they come in more, we'll have to come back to the...
Were you from two social shows, you chose what you're going to do before you did?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Either, one way or the other, either at a commission meeting, just through publications we give to you, so.
Yeah. I was told, I was told Bob today, and we're getting pretty busy over there, that I really want Robert and Charlie and to have an opportunity to make sure that it's, has a nice presentation.
If, I have, we accomplish a lot of things by teams. I put Robert and Charlie in a couple of teams in the old town, which is the Sixth Street, Sixth and Richard Street, commercial area, original commercial area, and then also the, all of the things are now happening along Sixth Street. That all has to be looked at, let's say holistically or as a whole. You know, this, the pavilion is just one piece of it. We have to remember this is part of a larger piece and we have to have a coordinated approach. And so that's what I've asked Robert to do, is form a team, to have a coordinated approach, a planned approach. So it works well together and...
When are they going to start working on that pump house? I know we've appropriated the money.
Oh, on the new pump house? We'll have to defer to...
Charlie?
Charlie? Yeah.
I'm sorry, ma'am, commissioners. The new pump house, we've already executed the contract, had the pre-construction, we've already given out the notice of proceeding. It's also been through the historical commission. So it's good to go. I just spoke with, or emailed Omar Castillo this morning, and Rusty's good to go. So you should start seeing, within the next 10 days, you should start seeing some construction out there on well 19.
Okay.
Now we have the old pump station 19 that still needs some work and we have no finite plans for that just yet. The original plan was to maybe partner with, with the volunteer firefighters and establish it as a, as a facility for their historic fire apparatus and maybe some other things. So it requires some money. And what I had once proposed is to set up some city funds that they could, that we could use to match against donations and fundraising.
Is that money still there?
That was the fiscal year 11 surplus, I have to go back and look. It may not be. It was $20,000.
Yeah, I remember.
It wasn't a huge sum of money, but it was, it was enough that I had hoped that it would motivate some fundraising efforts. That's never taken off. But I think with a little effort, we could see if there's still some opportunity there.
Okay.
So we have that phase of pump station 19 as well.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
If we, if we make a motion on here, that means we can do some of the improvements, but not all of these. Are we, are we stuck with doing all of these things exactly as is?
I think what has to happen is they have to come back to us with the kind of act we're...
Well, I, I think that there's a budget amendment. So once you approve the budget amendment, we're good to go.
Right.
Now, I would, I would want to inform you of what we're doing, but in terms of actually initiating projects and getting them done, no further, correct me if I'm wrong, no further approval by the city commission.
Well, I, yeah, I understand, and that's, my, my thing is, okay, we're going to be kind of pursuing the electrical, solar panels, and we approve it as it is, then we kind of throw that out the window, doesn't it?
No, I don't think so, because I think you're going to need that anyway. I mean, I, I'm, I'm not an expert in these things, but I'm thinking traditional electric service can marry very well with the new method to...
Well, yeah, I do, too, but I just want to make sure, again, I'm kind of thinking out loud and bringing this out, because I want to make sure we're all understanding each other on where we're going.
The electric service at the pavilion is just a small part of the, part of the electric service that's going to be needed for all of the facilities there. You know, for example, we could have one of those water spout things the kids run through and, you know, swimming pools so much anymore, but you do have these water spouts and that takes pumps and generators and all kinds of things that perhaps could be run by alternative forms of energy. So I would like to explore that as part of, as part of what we're doing, but I don't think it's to the exclusion of the traditional electric service.
And I know the bulk of this is going to be the concrete and finishing the deck.
Mm-hmm.
All the stuff.
Huh, it's expensive.
Anything else? This is an action item. Second, motion made by Commissioner Pagan to authorize staff to do forward these improvements, seconded by Commissioner Peckles. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Peckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Pagan?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Mayor Pagan?
Yes. And next item is consider introduction of orders amended in fiscal year 2012, 2013 budget, fund for improvements to the city of Kingsville downtown pavilion.
Mayor, commissioners, this is an introduction item of the agenda item that you just approved from Pavilion. And again, it is first reading. Second reading wouldn't come back, they'd amend it or plan incorporating some electrical and some of the factors that might not contain to be on the second reading possible.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory where you get the money. Does anybody have any questions about that?
And we've already realized these savings, these lineups so far, get actual revenue came in above the expected.
You know, we had a surplus still left last year, too. You know, you got a lot of projects that are going down there. You might, I know we talked about, maybe the streets might have another revenue stream for that, and you might want to consider, what is it, $120,000 that we haven't spent? How that took $100,000?
Yeah, about $140,000. We were wanting to put the streets, but if we have another funding source, we could redirect that to something else. Yeah, you and I talked about it.
Yeah. Well, it's just something to think about.
Absolutely.
Think to do about.
There's more need than supply.
Yeah. Don't have any problems when we get it up, right?
Right.
All right, that's an introduction item, unless anybody wants to say anything else about it, we're going to go to the next item. Consider introduction of orders amending the city of Kingsville code of ordinance by amendment, chapter three, RD seven, personnel policy, section one. Classification and compensation plan to add position of accounting supervisor and landfill informant to compensation and classification plan for fiscal year 2012, 2013 year.
Mayor, commissioners, Bob in the forties introduced a then-recurring city of Kingsville classification and compensation plan for fiscal year 2014. The packet of information includes two memos detailing information for the positions, the accounting supervisor and the landfill informant, including the doctor's license of the positions. Creating the accounting supervisor management level four in the landfill informant range 20 positions will not increase the staffing levels. In the case of the accounting supervisor and accountant two position will not be filled, and in the case of the landfill informant, the equipment operator three position, which was budgeted, would not be filled. Additional costs for each of the positions will be absorbed within your respective budget for this fiscal year. Any other questions?
Any questions?
Was there an increase in the, in the budget on, you know, it's going to be picked up by the budget, the respective budget budget. Is there an increase by, by creating this position to you or...
For next, I'm talking, for this, for this fiscal year, it would be absorbed for next fiscal year, there would be additional expense.
What, you know how much?
On the financial impact for the, for the finance department, for, it's not a detailed value to the year, but for this fiscal year, for seven pay periods, was an additional $8,086. For the landfill, the additional for seven pay periods would be $2,171.
Was that in the accounting?
Accounting, yes. It would, we would not fill the accountant two position in creating the accounting supervisor position.
It's not an additional position, a different position.
Why are we doing this?
Well, we've had some turnover in the finance office among accountants and it's, it's been a challenge, quite frankly, to get qualified personnel that will stay with us during the length of time. So we've had to change the duty, we've had to rewrite job descriptions, and the bottom line is that we're going to have to pay more, I think, to get a higher level of expertise. This is part of that. It's not just paying more, it's changing this person's duties so that they accept more responsibility. And I think that's, it's just, we've got to change over time and we've had, we've had some, both of these departments on discussion tonight, both the landfill and finance department have suffered from high profile. And that's, that's largely what we're responding to, is how can we keep these operations staff and limit the turnover. In some cases, you have to change positions and pay more money to do that. I think, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, we have, we have three vacancies at landfill right now? I know you're driving a piece of equipment yourself.
Yeah. Two operator positions that are vacant right now.
And you have a total of how many?
Three, but I got a temp working in the facility.
Okay.
That's a position right now.
And so we've had, we've had one position short in finance for several months now. So we, you know, we're, we don't have a surplus of staff anyway, and then when you're short, it really hurts and imposes large work requirements on those who have to fill in. So that's one of the reasons we're coming to the city commission. The primary reason why we're coming to the city commission of these proposed changes.
Okay.
We think in the long run will be, yeah, turnover has a cost associated with it. We're thinking a long run, we're better off financially.
Are we still advertising?
No, I think it's, I think we're concluded now. I don't know about landfill, but with...
I think we've hired already four.
And how many?
Yeah, we've hired a person...
I've hired much lady.
Yeah. But that's, that's it, that's the extent of life.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. That's the introduction item also, so let's, unless somebody has any other questions, we'll move on to the next item. Next item is consider resolution proven operation with the steering committee of city served by AEP, TTC to review AEP's Texas Central Company, special approval of adjustment to energy efficiency cost recovery factor, hiring legal and consulting services negotiated with company and direct any necessary litigation in the fields, with all costs paid by the county, which is just incredible. Finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public, as required by law, requiring legal notes on this resolution to legal counsel. And why I say that is, we still, but we're guaranteed to get our legal fees paid by them, right?
Yes, because there is no entity at the state level that really looks at and dissects their rate filings. And so I think that this is kind of a, something that the legislature had put in, kind of as a public policy sort of thing. If you're going to end up paying for the other side's fees, it should make you more reasonable in the rate request that you submit. And the utilities had actively tried to get that struck from the law this last legislative session, but were mercifully unsuccessful in doing that, which is a benefit to all the citizens of the state of Texas. As you said, AEP is trying to collect nearly nine and a half million dollars through the various things that are detailed out in the memo. And as the city has done on at least three other occasions since I've been here the last 13 years, the city's been asked to and has in the past participated in joining the Coalition of Cities and hiring this firm. As you said, it doesn't cost the city any money out of pocket, but it does help the citizens that pay AEP to make sure that the rate increase that they might be getting in the future is well called and to make sure that the cost increases are as justified as best possible. In the past, aside from hiring the firm, there's also been consultants that hired to make sure that the amounts that they're seeking back are reasonable and necessary. And generally, in the past, there has been a reduction in the requested rate increase through the efforts of the Coalition of Cities.
Anybody have any questions about this? This is not our first time around, would it?
Yes.
We do this annually, or is it seem like it's...
No, sir, they, there used to be a, any time that the utility would submit a rate increase, then this type of thing would come up. The last legislative session, I believe, or perhaps it was the one before that, no, I believe it was the last one, they had that kind of modified and such that there are certain rate increases that they can make without cities being able to challenge it now. But the particular type of rate increase that they're requesting here is still something that we're able to challenge in the sense of making sure that it is actually adjusted necessarily, not overly inflated.
Okay. Any questions? I mean, it's something we have to do, I mean, it's got to go, right?
Sure.
Is there a motion? Some, second, a motion made by Commissioner Pagan to approve this resolution, seconded by Commissioner Peckles. If there's not any other discussion, then we'll have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Peckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Pagan?
Yes.
Mayor Pagan?
Yes. If, unless someone has an objection, I thought we'd take number 12 out of order before we go on to the second.
That's good.
Okay. Anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Okay. Consider condemnation order for 12, 29, and 50 Kingsville persons.
Sir, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, good evening. This is a request from Mr. and Mrs. Francisco Resendez to rescind the condemnation that was approved by city commission on May 28. On June the 18th, I spoke to the Resendez family on the issue and we agreed, we all agreed that the House was able to be repaired. They reiterated their commitment to keep and repair their home and asked for 60 days to address the exterior of building. After checking with city attorney, I can't grant an extension to a building that, an extension to the building that has already been condemned. We agreed that if the commission rescinds the condemnation, that the Resendez will apply for a permit tomorrow morning and we'll begin the time clock on them and have 60 days to make the repairs on the outside. That would make it August 26. They have to mow and trim and weed the yard and also address some overhanging trees. That's basically what started the complaint of some trees going out to the adjacent property. Installing new siding and trim around the entire house, re-roofing the entire house and installing door trim and soffit panels, make the house look nice and presentable. If the exterior is done within 60 days, we can extend, we will extend the building permit to the remaining 10 months, which is a... remaining ten months, which is a, it's a one-year permit, to complete the interior. So the interior work basically includes new drywall, the interior walls, electrical, plumbing, everything. Both the city and Resendez's, we both agree that if the exterior is not addressed within sixty days, that we can revoke the permit and start condemnation process again. I recommend rescinding the condemnation to allow Mr. Resendez sixty days to repair the exterior building, and then we'll see where it goes from there.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I have one comment. Thanks for working on that together. I think that's what we're here for.
But we're also here to make sure that our citizens keep the property going down.
Absolutely.
And I want to tell you this right now. How long have they owned this house?
Since, the last permit I saw was two thousand four, so it couldn't be.
Two thousand four, and the city's having to, having to spend our time, valuable time for our, our employees, our people to go out and document all this stuff and work, when they should have been cleaning up that mess to begin with, without having the city to do it.
Actually, the city did not go clean any mess there.
I know, you didn't either. And that's what I'm talking about, and you're, you're out of order. You're not to talk, because you had an opportunity, a public hearing, to speak, and you're not speaking now. I'm telling you, I, I support staff, I support staff when they, when they have to go out and document and do all this work, and then, you know, they come in at the last minute and want us to do something. And, and, and it's not right. It's not right for citizens to do that. You're out of order.
Did you hear me? I apologize, Mr. Mayor, but I thought that I was going to get an opportunity to talk.
No, you're not. You're out of order.
Anything else? Okay. This is a motion now. Anybody got a motion?
I make a motion that we go up on staff recommendation on rescinding the condemnation.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner to rescind the condemnation, seconded by Commissioner Luber. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Peckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Paney?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Mayor Paney?
Yes. Next item is executive session. Executive session, section five five one four oh seven one, Texas government code, protection with attorney's exception, the city commission shall convene an executive session to seek legal advice from the city attorney regarding the matter in which the duty of attorney to the government body, government body under the Texas Discreet Rules of Professional Conduct and Statute of law, Texas, according to this chapter. Okay, we're back in the session. Let's go on to item eleven. Consider introduction of an ordinance amended in fiscal year two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen budget of the general funding of legal department for professional services. Mark?
Mayor Commissioners, this is an introduction item, which would appropriate additional nineteen thousand dollars for legal services in the legal department, and the source of funding would be from auctioned out. And I believe the city attorney is getting close to a letter of explanation with this motion.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about this? I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Okay, then that's the last order of business we have for the city to know who will be adjourned.